We call our meetings to order. We've had our digest turned down because the size of our ad. We call our meetings to order. We've had our digest turned down because the size of our ad. If you have a cellphone, please turn it on vibrate. And it is now six oh one. So, Mr. Paxton.
One please stand for prayer. Join me, please. Gracious heavenly Father, we come to you at this time, Lord, just thanking you for all of this you've done for us today, and all you've done for us throughout this past year. As we start the new year, Lord, help us to once again call upon your name and ask you to be with us. Ask your presence to be with us, ask your wisdom, your guidance, and your leadership, Lord. We're just mere people, but you are the great God of all. And we just ask, Lord, that you would just lead us through this difficult task. And, Lord, we just know that if we put our confidence in you, that you never let us down. Lord, thank you for, again, this counting. Thank you for everyone here, Lord, with this, the testament for our people for this night to these, as bad as it is, cold, windy. And we have a good turnout, Lord, because these people here are people that are interested in Fannin County. And I love Fannin County, Lord. So you bless each and every one of them. Thank you again, forgive us of our sins, we ask in Jesus' name. Amen.
I pledge allegiance to the United States of America. It is with all our heart and soul one nation under God, indivisible, liberty and justice for all.
All right, gentlemen, I'll call the meeting to order for the Fannin County Board of Commissioners.
I call the Fannin County Board of Education. It's to order for a public hearing on House Bill 581.
I call the City of Blue Ridge, City Council session to consider the intent to opt out of the federal statute.
Seeing the case, we'll open our meeting with intent to opt out of the statute.
City Morganton, call to order for 581 bill.
Just made it from up here. Everybody see that all right?
Yes. So, I am Dawn Cochran. I'm the Chief Appraiser of the Taxation Assessors Office here at Fannin County.
Louder. Okay, can you hear me now?
Yes.
Okay. Again, I'm Dawn Cochran. I'm the Chief Appraiser of Fannin County. I appreciate everybody coming out and showing their interest in this. It's something that's very important for our county. And this is a good show and letting us know that you think so too. I wanted to give kudos to an individual that I was talking to a couple of weeks back. And he gave me a small slideshow that he used in his county when he was trying to discuss House Bill 581. And I took a little bit from him and took a little bit from the law, and then I took a lot from Fannin County's details so that I could make it more local and more important to us as far as understanding the impacts directly to Fannin County. Can you still hear me or not even hold back? I can hold it. So, his name is Blake Ellsbury. He is a previous commissioner that was in Shatoga, Georgia. And he shared these slides with me, so he helped in this, and I wanted to give him credit there. No, I'm good, I can do it. As many of you know, some of you know, I'm not a public speaker. I've never ran the presentation in front of anybody. I didn't even know how to use PowerPoint until a couple of days ago. So, just bear with me. I'm a Fannin County resident. I've been here for forty years. I love my job. I've been at my job for twenty-seven years, almost twenty-eight. And I want to explain to you the impact that I can see, the facts of the law, give you the information you need to go by and make a call in your jurisdiction of what you think says for our county. I'm not trying to persuade anybody one way or another, but I do have the information in my office that helps us get to numbers and get to the decisions that need to be made in this county. And I kind of have found myself saying this over and over, and that's, many people don't know this about Fannin County. And as you guys have came to these meetings and talked to us, I'm hearing it more and more. And you're not intended on knowing that. This is more my job and more the understanding of the Tax Assessors Office. And so, I want to convey that information over to you guys as properly as I can. And having that said, most people do not understand that Fannin County actually has some of the best exemptions in the state of Georgia. And we have a multi-level exemption. And those exemptions date all the way back to nineteen ninety-nine. They were voted in, and then they were even made a little better in twenty, or two thousand four. So, this little slideshow here shows you that if you had a piece of property that was valued a hundred thousand dollars, and then with market increases, I increased your value to a hundred and ten the next year, Fannin County's current local freeze will float that ten thousand dollar exemption that I added to you, and you'll still only pay on a hundred thousand dollars on the county side of the portion of the tax. There's no rate of inflation, there's no CPI index. It doesn't change from that local lock-in value. Now, Fannin County's local homestead exemption covers your home, one home, and up to ten acres of land. Okay? Now, another tier of that exemption is if you're seventy and older and your income qualifies, then you get that same exemption off of the school tax. Okay? As values increased from nineteen ninety-nine at a home that was probably a hundred and eighty thousand for the house and ten acres, and we pull ourselves up to twenty twenty-four, and that now is four hundred eighty, five hundred fifty, a hundred thousand, that float, that exemption just floated right on up as I increased value. Now, anybody less than seventy does not get a local freeze off the school. You guys are only feeling that pressure from the seventy and older. Okay? The cities do not see it at all. You guys do not have anything really more than a disabled veteran and along that line state exemption, with the exception of Morganton. And Morganton sees an exemption that come from the state in the form of a two thousand dollar exemption for everyone in their city, no matter age or no matter income. Okay? So, that is an explanation, a quick, basic explanation of how these local freezes work and how they grow. And over time, they really make an impact. This is hard to see, but I tried to show that we have multi-levels in Fannin County. And it starts with anybody that's my age and got an exemption, it's considered a S1. But I also get the local freeze from the date I locked in off of the county portion. At seventy, if I'm, you know, income qualifies, then I can start getting off the school tax side. We have an exemption that starts at sixty-two years of age. There's two income brackets for it. And then we have an exemption for sixty-five. There's two income brackets for it. And seventy, and there's income brackets for it. The cities are exactly what I said earlier, and that's, this is showing that. We're showing they're covering only disabled veteran top exemptions. And then Morganton has that extra two thousand exemption. Millage rate in Fannin County, some of you guys have seen this and heard about this. Basically, we have been able to, with the combination of the city and the school, I mean, the, well, city, county, and schools, really. I only have county and schools on here. But we've been able to go from, in two thousand three, our total millage rate for the county and the schools alone was twenty. And as we've increased values and as market has grown, and as the commissioners have been willing to not tax gouge and roll back these millage rates when they could, they've been able to manage this tax system and roll it all the way back from a twenty mill rate to currently a nine point one six five. That is second or third lowest in the state of Georgia. I don't know exactly, because some people don't update their millage rates annually on the system, so I can't really tell on that one. And then if we flip over and we take it even tighter down to our surrounding counties, I pulled this from the Department of Revenue's website, and this is twenty twenty-three, so not twenty-four. But you can see Fannin County had a county portion of two point seven five seven and a school portion of seven point four three nine. Gilroy had a five point five for the county portion, and their school had a nine point seven four four. Union had a four point two eight six with their school portion being seven point five two three. Pickens had a seven point three nine oh with their school portion being a twelve point forty. Towns had a four point three three nine with their school portion being a five point nine nine five. And then Fannin County even rolled it back even further in twenty-four. We had a large increase of value took place in twenty-four, and they rolled the millage rate back all the way to a two point four six five. And the school rolled theirs all the way back to a six point seven from a seven point four three nine. This, in my small mind, shows equalization of taxation. We should not be taken in having counties out there that I say, here's you another two hundred million dollars, and they say, thank you, and they hold that mill rate. They should not be doing that, because that's not how it was intended. That's when the taxpayers start getting choked. Okay? So, I give kudos to our commissioners for being able to do this, because the only people that have the authority to do this is the elected officials through the city, the counties, and the school. And they make a choice on this every single year, whether to roll back, or whether to hold where they're at, or whether to go somewhere in between. And I know for a fact that Jamie's even rolled back further than the said roll-back rate. This right here is just to give you guys a rough count for my twenty-four values that the county's part of their digest has basically fifteen thousand eight hundred and twelve types and counts of exemptions. That top number, the six nineteen two nine two five one five, that's a total of every one of their exemptions. Here's the school and the cities. School has twelve thousand, I'm sorry, these numbers are blurry for me, I can't see it on this one, twelve thousand six fifty-five, for a total of four hundred and ten million nine hundred and fifty-eight five fifty worth of exemptions that come right off the bat from their digest values. These are not taxable dollars. They've been exempted off, and they don't see a revenue from these. You drop down to Blue Ridge, right now they've got two twelve. McCaseville's got fifty, and Morganton's got sixty-eight. There's a few other factors that I would like to put out there so that we get our mind wrapped around that this isn't all about House Bill 581. We've got to consider the other factors going on in Fannin County. And the very first one is, our parcel count is twenty-nine thousand five hundred. We have grown significantly in our parcel count in the last ten years. Out of those, we have thirteen hundred and sixty-four that are exempt parcels. Okay? Then when you drop down to that middle piece right in the center, you can see that residential parcels is eighty-two percent of Fannin County's but, or digest. So out of three point eight billion, three point one billion belongs residential. That is not normal across the state of Georgia. Most people have a good amount of commercial, a good amount of industrial. They have a little bit of everything. That shares the burden with us. This is one of the things that makes it so hard for Fannin County to get a digest passed through the state, because we're so heavily residential, and that's where all the sales are, and that's where things have gone hog wild, that it is a numbers game trying to balance that out. If you drop down in the next category, you're going to see House Bill eight oh eight. That is another referendum that was on the ballot. And they said, hey, you know, do you want an exemption instead of seven, seven thousand five hundred? Do you want a twenty thousand dollar exemption this year? And everybody's like, yeah, that sounds good. Well, what that really meant in Fannin County language is personal property. If you own a boat, or if you own a cabin rental business or a small business here in Blue Ridge, then if you, if your value was less than seventy-five hundred, you weren't getting a tax bill. And everybody that was seventy-five oh one and up were. We just took that statewide, and we took it from seventy-five hundred dollar threshold to twenty thousand. And in Fannin County alone, that immediately dropped twelve million dollars off of our digest. And that's only counting from seventy-five oh one to nineteen nine nine nine. That's not anything less than seventy-five, because we'd already lost that, and we weren't counting on it. Well, when you take twelve million dollars of value, and you adjust that, and you do your millage rate, that means eighty-two thousand is going to be off the school taxes, and thirty thousand's coming off of the county taxes before you guys ever even start figuring millage rates. So that's something that we voted in as a state, and that's going to be for us to deal with as well. This right here is a copy of consolidation sheets, and that basically, Scotty, can you get this bigger? I can't see any of these, I'm sorry. I've been strained and trying to use my forty-six-year-old eyes, and I'm not able to see this. This right here is small, can you make that larger? Wonderful. Now I can see. And so, if you take a look at the breakdown of this, you're basically going to see, on this side, you're going to see a gross digest total county-wide. Does everybody see that? Lynn, can you point up there? Like, right above exemption amount, all the way up, one more, up to, on up, one more, up there. That right there. That, yes, that right there is where the county starts at before any exemptions and anything happens, and the schools. Well, if you see, if we drop down to the county portion, they immediately lose six hundred and forty-four million dollars in exemption. And then, if I go over to the schools in the city, you're going to see the school loses four hundred and twenty-eight million. And then you're going to see Blue Ridge loses one point five million. McCaseville loses one point two million. Morganton loses eight hundred and fifty-three thousand before we ever consider changing this, House Bill 581. So, going in to explain House Bill 581, it took place January first of twenty twenty-five. House Bill 581 implements a float homestead exemption for all local governments. That, right now, we have it, whether you voted on it or not. The cities have this exemption, the county has this exemption, and the school has it. It passed, we have it. A floating homestead is a type of exemption designed to offset inflationary increases in values. It works by increasing the value of exemptions to offset the tax dollars. This is going to require the taxpayers to vote for or against a one percent floss. That is called a floating local option sales tax. If that passes, the additional revenue coming in on that will have to be used for tax relief only, and it's going to be used in a manner to roll back millage rates. If it fails, you try, try, try again. You decide when you have an extra forty thousand dollars to hold another exemption and see if you can get them to vote for it again. But you will always have the exemption, with no money coming in to offset the exemption if you can't get it passed. The earliest Fannin County can even have an election is going to be likely mid-November twenty twenty-five. This will cost us about thirty-eight to forty thousand dollars. The soonest that we'll see a return on the floss will be, we'll know kind of what numbers look like in twenty twenty-six, but you really will not see true numbers coming in to where we can put them on the PT-32s and start comparing numbers until twenty twenty-seven. This is a five-year floss, so that means every five years, our taxpayers are going to be burdened with a new election. And it can't be attached or booked on to any other type of elections going on. It has to be its own special election, just like this floss. For homes that are receiving this for the first time, if they come in and they apply with me for twenty twenty-five, their twenty twenty-four value is where their base is going to lock in. The value will be reset anytime it's sold. These values can be adjusted based off substantial property changes, additions, new houses, garages, remodels, things like that. We can up the value on those. The floating homestead exemption in House Bill 581 is an addition to, but not in the place of existing homesteads. So, for communities like ours that have existing local exemptions, the taxpayer will receive whichever of the two actually benefits them. If Fannin County's been locked in since nineteen ninety-nine, and we've got long-term homestead folks that's lived here for years, this exemption will never help them, because what we have to offer, this exemption can't beat. But, as time builds, as values change, and as this plays out down the road, we could see a shift in that, because everybody that locked in knew, and let's say maybe they are in Morganton, in Nelson's area. Well, because Morganton didn't have a local freeze back when we locked them in for our local freeze, all of a sudden, anybody and everybody in a city limit is going to probably lean more to a House Bill 581, because mine doesn't give them that, but the new one would. Does that make sense? This includes any local floating homestead exemptions that are added to our future as well. So this is an explanation of 581 floating exemption that was set up in the Fannin County. So remember, we had a hundred thousand dollar value. We reappraised them ten thousand dollars. That float went up ten thousand, they still paid on a hundred thousand. If we go with House Bill 581, then we have that same hundred thousand dollar value. They give us, this first year, let's say they do a two percent CPI, and that's considered a consumer price index. That number comes from the State Revenue Commissioner annually. The following year, their hundred thousand is increased by a two percent, and they're taxed on a hundred and two thousand. We were at a hundred thousand and locked in with no increase. Tax burdens don't disappear, they shift. In Fannin County, we do not have many commercial and industrial properties to shift this burden to. We have a majority of residential properties, so we cap values or increase exemptions. So if we cap values or if we increase exemptions, one of the three things is going to have to take place. And this is going to be in each city, each county, and the school. You have one option of budget cuts. You have number two option, mill rate increases from all three entities, or a combination of the two. Cut the budgets as far as you can, and then roll the mill rate up to make the checkbook balance. With one of the lowest millage rates in the state of Georgia, the history of Fannin County shows that our taxation system is working well. I contribute that to the property being assessed at market value, efficient collection of our taxes, elected officials rolling back millage rate when they can, and a complicated balance of our property taxes coming in and the multiple local option sales tax that we have coming in. I feel like, that in looking at these numbers and understanding where this has been building in Fannin County all the way since nineteen ninety-nine, and Lynn's been here through this whole thing. She came over on the arm. This is a delicate balance that takes the school doing what they're supposed to, because if they were being money greedy and they didn't roll back, we wouldn't be here. If the cities didn't do what they were supposed to do by rolling back and keeping budgets cut as far as they can, if the counties didn't do their part, and everybody didn't work together, we would not be here saying, maybe this isn't for us, maybe it is. But either way, you guys have a challenge of making the best educated decision you can make, voting it, and standing behind what you did and said. May I be excused? May I be excused? To go home.
All right, ladies and gentlemen, what we'll do is we'll open it up for comments, suggestions. Anything you got to say, like Mr. Stahl said, please come up here and state your name and, yes, sir, you're in the back.
Yeah, I wanna say something.
Sure. Yeah, please, please.
My name is Marion Garrett, I live here in Blue Ridge. I was eighty-years-old when I came in here, I think I'm eighty-one now. This was covered at its best, we got a long, one-sided explanation, um, your point of view, but there was nobody up here to tell us about this other point of view. I don't know whether the numbers are right or wrong or what it is, but you know, I've been up here for eight or ten years, and I don't get any exemptions, but I'm not poor and broke enough to do it. If I was, you know, maybe I'd get the exemption. But I hear that the government wants to, um, be able to tax us more and have like a, almost a slave audience to be able to tax for the property tax. And if you can't pay the property tax, you take the property, compensate the home, and then you're homeless. America has a whole problem with government turning into an aristocracy. The average government employee makes most twice what the taxpayers make. I get no-paid vacation, nobody's paying attention, nobody pays my healthcare. You know, I pay for it all, I'm the private sector. I'm the one that saves money, invests money, opens up a business, provides jobs. I'm the one who supports all of this. And government just gimme, gimme, gimme. So, that's not, I don't know whether it's right or wrong with that, but the other side is not presented. So, trust me, I'm the government, no thank you.
Anyone else? Kim?
Yes, sir. Well, the whole purpose of homestead-
What's your name?
Sorry, Julian Black. The whole purpose of homestead exemption anyway is to give financial relief for people over sixty-five. That's the whole purpose of it. Okay, in the state of Georgia, overall, sixty-two-point-nine percent voted yes on this measure, thirty-seven-point-eight percent voted no. In Fanning County, sixty-six-point-eight percent voted yes. So I don't say why we're having this meeting. The majority of the people in Fanning County have already spoken. So why are you having this meeting, why are you attempting to go against the Constitution that the majority of people in Fanning County already want?
Amen.
I think it's ridiculous. And y'all took an oath to uphold the Constitution of the United States and of the state. This seems to me like this is treason.
Thank you, sir. Mr. Donaldson.
My name is Charles Donaldson, and what I'm gonna say will address what you just mentioned. I worked in the election office as a volunteer. And I worked this last election. And I stand there behind the machines or behind the voters and assist them in their voting, make sure they don't have any issues, any problems with the machines or with their, their manipulation of the screens, and make sure they print out their ballot and it gets into the ballot box. Some of you guys may have seen me in there. We had, um, so many people ask, "What does this mean? What do these words mean?" On the different, um, bills that they were, that was on the ballots, I think we had three of them. I'm not allowed to explain it. And I understand that, I may explain it one way, and I may shift the vote one way, just by the words I choose. I just, I have to tell them I can't tell you anything, I can't explain it. If you have problems with the machines, then I can help you, but other than that, I can't do anything. So over and over and over again, we were asked, "I don't understand these," and they would turn and try to get help. And it's unfortunate. The, the bills were worded, uh, House Bill 581 was worded so that it was, um, aiming, whoever was reading it, it was actually worded to get you to answer yes. And the word, the words that they used, not everybody understood. So, over and over again, for three weeks, we had people ask, "What does this mean?" I'm sorry. The only thing I can tell you is to vote yes, no, or just bypass the question and go ahead and go to your next, um, place there to vote. So, that addresses what you, what you said, what you were talking about. We had sixty-six percent of the counties already selected this. And I'm saying that maybe they didn't understand, fully understand what they were reading. It sounds good, but it was designed to sound good. It was worded to sound good, somebody wrote it to sound good. Just because sixty-six percent of the county voted for it doesn't, uh, actually, you should not reflect that it's, it's actually best for the county. And that was the point that I wanna make. It may be good for other counties, but it may not be best for Fanning County. And I think the figures that we just saw will tell us that it may not be the best for us here.
My name's Bill Whaley, and I'm speaking as an individual. I, I have the good fortune to have a number of lobbyists and politicians and school board members in other counties that are part of my practice in Atlanta. I have asked three lobbyists who are very well-known in the city, in the state, one in healthcare, one in transportation, and one in utilities. If there's anybody that ought to know what a bill says, it's a lobbyist. All three of them said, "I feel like Nancy Pelosi, you have to pass the bill and know what's in it." I have a feeling that, uh, to echo the last speaker, that we knew who we were voting for when we voted for president. And we knew who we were voting for when we voted for the House and the Senate. We had plenty of ads, we had plenty of education, we had zero for this. Interestingly enough, I contacted after that the heads of two school boards in huge counties. We got our school board people here. Neither one of them knew anything about this bill when the election came up. And then contacted the head of the county commission in another county. He didn't know anything about it when he went to the election. So the fact that the voters voted for it is, to me, means nothing. Secondly, if we pass this, then we are handicapping our future county commissioners, school boards, and city councils and taking their ability to react to the conditions that are going on away from them. And my old dad said, "Don't burn your bridges, boy." So I would say that we were, have to pass the bill and know what's in it is exactly what we're in here today. That if we do this, then we are gonna be living with it for decades. And I don't feel comfortable handicapping the people that come after me and come after them because of the misunderstandings that we may have over this bill. I am not saying that it's not good for some people in some counties. But I'm saying I can find nobody, and this audience proves it, who had thorough knowledge of what this bill meant when they went to the polls and cast their vote.
Brian, Brian Richard, I live here in the county. You know, I, I've listened to the tax assessor. First of all, thank, thank you guys. I'm only gonna actually address the school board and the county commissioners, I don't have a vote in the cities. I have a vote for school board and county commissioners, so that, where I'll address that, and, uh, 'cause I don't have any vote in the city. And, uh, but I wanna first say, thank all of you for this past week, all the first responders, all the people and out there on the road crews all night long, getting people out of ditches, each and every one of you, I wanna thank all of you, 'cause that's why we live in Fanning County, you guys left Fanning County, okay? So I think we can have an open, honest discussion here and not be offended. I'm just a tad offended. I might be a tad offended with nine-thousand-seven-hundred-sixty-two other people that I just heard had no idea what the hell they was doing the day they pushed yes. I pushed yes. I pushed yes at the same time I pushed yes for three school board members. I pushed yes for the same time I pushed yes for Johnny Cersei. I pushed yes, and so did nine-thousand-seven-hundred-sixty-two people. So I think if anything here, going to say that just everybody and nobody understood anything they were doing that day, uh, may be something we want to rethink for the citizens of Fanning County. This man here, I respect the daylight out of him, anytime you come to vote, he helps you every way you can, and I respect everything you said today about being helpful. But let me tell you what they did do. You're a hundred percent right, they probably asked you, said, "What does this mean? What does this proposition mean?" And you said, "I can't help you with that." But you know what they did? They went ahead and voted, okay? They went ahead and voted. They could've said, "I don't wanna vote, I don't understand it," but they did. Okay, that's called the will of the people, the democracy. Now, and that being said, every one of you have an association. Every city, I study it, you have city associations. County, you got the county association, represents all the counties, okay? School boards, you got your association that represents all the school boards. Now if you're disconcerted tonight, why didn't all of you in associations get together and run a real hard campaign against this before Election Day? Why didn't they? Why didn't whoever runs the school, and I know who they are, who runs the school association that we're all members of, come to you and say, "Look, we need to get out here and campaign against this, get people to vote no, put signs up, put no." But you didn't. Why didn't the county, uh, commission association say, "Fellas, we need to get out here and get us some no signs, 'cause if this thing creeps in, we might have a problem." But you didn't. Same thing with all you cities, you didn't. And the reason I bring that up, the reason I bring that up, is that I've lived here. When all of your associations came to you and said, "You better get out there and put a sign up to vote yes for Slops, or you better get out there and put a sign up to vote for this, or you better push back against this bill down at the House," right? You don't have to nod your head yes or no, you know I'm right. All your associations kept to you and say, "You better get down to Capitol and fight this bill. It's bad. You better get out there and put this sign up and get Slops re-voted." Now I'm not here to debate the value in, in, in 581 a hundred percent, but I'm just saying, now, now, you tell me that nine-thousand-seven-hundred-sixty-two people? Now, let me just, let me just say this, all right? We heard the tax assessor. We probably have the best tax assessor office in the state of Georgia. And I'm gonna tell you what, there's many of you here who know tonight. The, what they have to go through to satisfy the state revenue, Department of Revenue, what Don and them have to go through to satisfy the Department of Revenue? But let me tell you something, folks. The nice lady that stood up there tonight, she's your tax assessor, okay? But she has no taxing authority. This isn't your taxing authority. Not your tax assessor, right? And you know what your tax assessor kept saying? "If, if, if." These are good people. I like most of you, some of you like me, many of you don't. But, let me just say it like this, they're good people. They roll back, they roll back. But if they didn't, if this board next year said, "No, we're not going to," 'cause I tell you something, I heard. If it comes the day that they need to raise the millage rate to balance the checkbook. You know who the checkbook is? That's me, that's you, that's you. We're the ones that balance the checkbook. I like each and every one of them, I voted for them. I don't know about you, but I'd say we go about eighty-two percent Republican in here, all right? Now, here's all I'm gonna say and then we'll get out of the way. Two-thirds. Now, I don't know if you know this, I followed this bill last year. And the state senate, your state senate, had this bill passed and ready to go. But the Georgia State House would not pass it, John Burns would not pass it without giving the lobbyist the option for you to opt out. They wouldn't pass it unless they put a rider on there saying, "You can opt out." But this was never intended for you to opt out, but that's the only way they could get it passed. And I'm not here to argue the merits of it, I could get into it on a different time, 'cause I have studied it, all right? And I'm not saying it's the best thing in the world. The only thing is, if, if on that given day. You know, we got eighty-two-year-old people that don't know how to come over and, and do a challenge on their tax assessment. They don't know how to go to the Board of Equalization and fight that. And all these people have to do, and, fellas, I voted for all three of you. Glenn, write that down. I voted for all three of you legally, okay? I'll vote for you again, I better think that now. Voted for all three of them, all right? But, next year, if you three have the authority to take that up to them, then you know you do. I'm not saying anyone else, but you have that authority. School board over here, you have that authority, all right? And we all know what's happened to assessments. The only thing I'll say is a supermajority, two-thirds is a supermajority. That's not just a majority, folks, that's a supermajority. And to sit here tonight and assess, make an assessment on nine-thousand-seven-hundred-sixty-two people that they didn't know what they did, that's just not accurate, okay? And it's called for the will of the people. And here's, here's the way I think about it. As, as this gentleman stated earlier, sixty-two percent of the state voted yes. Okay, sixty-two percent of the state, right, wrong, or indifferent. Fanning County, sixty-six percent, has nine-thousand-seven-hundred-sixty-two votes. The only thing I wanna ask you tonight, every one of you that has stood for office and asked the citizens to go vote for you, have any of you ever received nine-hundred-seven-thousand, nine-thousand-seven-hundred-sixty-two votes? Have one of you here tonight got that many votes to get into this office? I don't think one of you got that many votes, I looked it up, all right? Maybe close, Jamie, don't make that face, you might be over. Nine thousand, did you get them in? I seen it through his whip, turn. I was checking, I was checking it, turn. But the point being is, you respected every one of those voters to get your seat. And I know that, I know Johnny, I know you, I don't know all the school board members, I don't know all the members of Blue Ridge and all the members of that. But this, this commission here, I know you guys, and I know you respected every one of them voters. I seen all of you go out and ask for the votes. So respect them voters tonight, and just say, "The will of the people said this is what they voted for."
Amen.
God bless you, thank, thank you for your service, I appreciate it.
Hey, Jennifer Rogers, I just wanted to start off by saying, I know this is a tough decision for everybody, everybody. I think when the- I think when the state put this in motion, in my mind anyway, what they were trying to do was offer some stability for people that are homesteaders within the state of Georgia. The people, and I don't care whether they're 18, whether they're 50, whether they're 80, if they move into your community to put their roots down and to become part of your community, I think the state was trying to say that these people maybe deserve a little bit of extra benefit, right? Our county being the way we are, uh, and believe me, I'm one of them, we're getting older and older and older. Our population is aging tremendously. And so we have kind of a weird situation going on where, you know, we, we, we have a different population than probably a lot of other places do. But I read in the paper, you know, I mean, I, I did, I did my best to study this bill before I voted on it. And I voted yes. And I'll tell you why. Probably like a lot of other people, I read, we're going to cap your taxable rate. And I said, count me in, you know? The cap sounded good to me. And, but I went back and I tried to look at it again. I thought, you know, that I make a bad decision to try to vote yes for this. And I still feel confident in the decision that I made. And I know that you guys, you know, you've got money to spend, you've got revenue to collect, and you're, you're trying to keep the millage rates low, which is understandable and helpful. But keep in mind, I've got the five-year tax digest in front of me for the county. You've rolled back millage rates every year. But yet, the collectible property taxes, it continued to go up, right? Because millage rates are only one side of the tax equation. It's the property value. So what, and school board, same way, you know? What it gets down to is this. Let's say that you have a 25-year-old or a 75-year-old that came across a piece of property in Fannin County, whether it was left to them in their family, or whether they got it at a good deal, or however they came into possession of it. They put their roots down here, right here, homestead exemption. So you've got the 70-year-old person that owns 25 acres out in Caches Valley. And you could get an accountant that came to that person and said, on paper, ma'am, you're worth 1.2 million dollars because of your property value. But yet, she can't buy groceries. She can't pay her life bills because she's got $50 in her checking account. That increase in the value of your property means zero to you until and unless you want to sell it. You being worth 1.2 million dollars on paper is not going to pay for your groceries. Tri-State's not going to accept it as form of payment. These are the people that if you give them the peace of mind, that no matter what the crazy real estate market does and says their property is valued at this or that or the other, this gives them breathing room that, yes, I can keep my home. These are not frivolous things. This is not a RV for fun, or a boat, or Mercedes. This is somebody's home that you're protecting by keeping those rates down. There's other ways to raise revenue, and I've spoken to the commissioners about this before. If you need to raise revenue, you've got the authority and the ability to raise millage rates. That might be a political landmine, but, you know, taxes go up one way or the other. Either you raise the value of the property and lower the millage rates, or do the absolute opposite. They're still going up. Everybody's paying more. And we expect to pay more. Things go up. But I still say that if you bring the actual property values within this county to what the actual purchase price has been of those properties, you will raise revenue and be able to leave the homestead people alone. And I'm just going to give you a couple of examples, and I know there's always problems, but we have a, I'm just looking at random things. A property that sold for 2.2 million dollars in 2021, and the tax value of it is 1.6 in 2024. Why? Why, why is our fair market value for tax purposes so much lower than what it actually sold for? And then you take the 40% value of that and reduce it even further. I've got another one, sold in 2022 for 2 million. Current value according to the tax assessor, 1.58. Those, if you get those properties in line, because I'm assuming somebody bought this without a gun to their head, so that's a fair market value. If you get those more in line, it's not going to be such a tremendous burden on the people. They don't want to sell. They don't want to sell. They want to stay here. They want to be, uh, part of the community. And I just hope that you guys will, uh, everybody, Morganton, the casual, Water Ridge, will consider that, uh, as you move forward.
So Ginger, I'd like to reply to that as the chief appraiser. Your suggestion is called sales chasing. It is totally illegal in the state of Georgia. My job would be so easy if that's all I had to do. That is not able to be done in the state of Georgia. And when you look at sales as a whole across the county, or you look at them divided by homogeneous groups like lake properties or view a river, these one and $2 million sales have to be investigated thoroughly. Because a $2 million sale may have a $30,000 boat. It may have $40,000 worth of black bear decorations on the inside. It may be a two-year proven rental cabin, and they're buying into a line of income. So just when you see something that you think may work, there's reasons behind that that doesn't allow tax assessors all over the state of Georgia to sales chase. And we are required, our number one rule is uniformity. And if we can't achieve uniformity, we can't get a digest passed. If we can't get a digest passed, we can't collect tax bills. And that's why that method would not work. It would be so nice if that's all we had to do because what you're saying is, if Ginger was willing to pay $2 million, she shouldn't be, have a problem paying on $2 million worth of taxes. But that's not how it works in the state of Georgia. We, we're not allowed to do that.
Can I respond to that, please? Well, maybe so, I don't know, but there is a place on Q public that you can put that it was a suspicious sale, or it was inventory included with the sale, to, to give you reasoning for what you've got the property bagged at. But I would say this, is that there's a universally accepted term on what fair market value is, and it's a willing buyer and a willing seller, and no gun to anybody's head, right? I'm sorry that the state won't allow y'all to use what somebody actually paid for the property as a fair market value. And maybe that's something that since this SB 581 has come into existence, maybe you need to talk to them about it. Say, give us more leverage on how we can assess these properties going forward. Cause some of them change hands two or three times a year for 200, 300,000 more dollars each time they change hands, you know? But what I'm saying is, I mean, if you had to choose on who you wanted to put the burden on, is it going to be the people that are homesteading or the casual buyer?
Hi, everybody. My name is Aaron Sevold, and I'm just wanting to ask, who does this help and who does this hurt? At the end of the day, I am a local-born Blue Ridge resident, lived here my entire life, and all of a sudden, we are changing how this works. In this presentation, we were shown, which I took a photo of the slide, we have, we have the lowest millage rate in the state of Georgia in the history of Fannin County that shows that our taxation system is working well. This was off of the presentation we all just watched. So if it's working well, why make this change? Okay? Who does this help? Who does this hurt? This hurts the low-income homeowners in the area. The tax credit may not seem like much, but to a low-income family, $2,000 can make a huge difference when inflation is as bad as it is. If we make this change, we are charging the poorest and the most people that have been here the longest likely, and punishing them with the responsibility of our county. I don't agree with that. That, in fact, is really frustrating that that's the plan. You admit we have a great system right now that's working well, lowest millage, best in the state, and yet you want more. And let me, let me ask this. What is to stop the lines on the map drawn for where this area will affect? What's to change it from expanding, spreading on and on further? You disenfranchise low-income homes, you push them out, and you bring in outside business. I can't see this as anything other than gentrification, and it's frustrating to see that that's what's becoming of our town. Thank you.
Can I talk loud enough to speak in here? I'm a big dude. Uh, my name's Josh Curtis. I wasn't, I hate public speaking. I wasn't going to speak, but I just want to say that I went in there and voted yes for this and feel duped because when I looked at it, I thought, hey, you're going to cut my taxes like I'm all for that, like doing it statewide, that just makes sense to me. What's crazy is, after a little bit of just digging into it, the state kind of knew this. We can leave it at a deficit, I believe, because they wanted to pass a SLOPS. So they're automatically, so we, we had voters that voted yes for this because they wanted a tax cut, but then they're going to turn around and charge us, we're going to pay $40,000 to hold an election so that people can vote in a tax increase to come up with the deficit? Doesn't make sense to me. So I feel duped as a voter that I didn't understand what it was really telling me. I feel like, to give props to Fannin County and where we're at, I feel like the school board, the commissioners, all the cities have done a great job, and I feel like you're ahead of the time. I feel like the other people in the state aren't as fortunate to have the leadership that we've had over the years to get us to where we're at with the lowest millage rate pretty much in the state. I think we're what, second or third? We're right in there? That's a, that's to be commended. So I think this is kind of taking, we're taking a step back, and, and I voted for it and didn't even realize it. So that's why I felt like I should probably stand up and say, hey, I had no idea that what I just did. And so after I did it, now I feel really bad. Anyway, that's all I got to say.
Anyone else?
I've got one short comment, if you don't mind. Uh, this lady made a point. She said, if the mill rate is low, are you going up on the profit taxes value and lowering the mill rate? Are you cooking the books? Is that what's happening? Is that how you manage keeping it low? Cause I will go home and look at my records and see, because mine has been going Peter Parker.
I think this, and I, 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 I said I wasn't going to speak out, just let anybody have their voice and everything. Two things, Mr. Black. First of all, you accuse us of treason, basically, is what you've done. That's not the truth. I go on, one second, I'm in. So secondly, you, everything we do is open records. You're more than welcome to come in anytime. We talked about this before, you're more than welcome to come in anytime. I'll sit down, get Ms. Cochran here, and we'll explain everything to you. If you think we're cooking the numbers, you're more than welcome to come in and take a look at it. That way we have a better understanding.
I'm just saying she made a point.
She did make a point. And also with Ms. Rogers.
I'm going to go home and be curious and look at mine.
Please do. Please do.
I mean, that's all I want.
Because I do know this, I've had people call after the last several of rollbacks and talk about how their taxes actually went down. I've had that in this county. Now, mine, unfortunately, had went up a little bit. And, and it is, but yeah, I know you didn't figure that. I figured that you would say that I just don't pay my taxes. You know, because I'm, I'm this guy, I'm a elected official, and I'm a treasonous person and all that other stuff. That's the first from here. First of all.
I don't think I'm going to be voters.
I don't like politics. I'll be the first one to tell you I don't like politics. I signed up for this job to do the best I could for the people of this county. You include. Woo! Next election, please put your name on the ballot and see if you can do better. And I'm not trying to diss my people.
I voted for you, but.
I, I understand, I know, I understand. But what I'm trying to say is, the accusations have been just not good here. And, and I'll say this again, the only, the only thing, the only reason that I wanted to have these right here, okay? I'll just be honest with you. This is Jamie, I can't speak for anybody else here. The only reason I wanted to have these public hearings is to find out if the majority of the people actually knew, actually knew, like Mr. Richard said, if they actually knew what they voted for, because I didn't. And, and Mr. Richard, we, we asked questions to our state officials and ACCG, and they couldn't give us solid answers. There's still unanswered questions about this that they can't tell us. So, so that's what I'm saying. When, when this thing was handed to us, obviously, we started asking questions. Well, there's, there's still, and I think you can agree with us on that, there's still some unanswered questions about this house bill. This is an amendment, just like you said, this is an amendment to the state constitution. The state constitution, think about that. This don't come around every 30 days. This is a historic event.
With an option.
With an option. But this is a historic event regardless. And for, for this to be, hey, we're going to opt in or we're going to opt out. Well, you're in automatically if it passes, hey, fine. That's fine. I wanted to have this to make sure that everybody understood exactly what Fannin County offered, what Fannin County, did you have any idea of ever, ever option that we had as far as homestead exemptions and everything? If you don't, we'll go over it again. But that's what I'm saying, I wanted to make sure that everybody understood what Fannin County had already offered, how this would affect us moving forward, and if we still wanted to go with it, we would take the survey at the end of these public hearings, and we would, we would hold that again. Cause I want to make sure, because this is a historical, it, it is something that will affect us, once you're in, you're in after March 1st. You can't get out. Once you're out, you can't get in. I want to make sure that 25,000 people or 30,000 parcels along the Shenanigans understand what we're fixing to do. And I want to hear from you. That's the worst thing I want to do is go against the will of the people. But I want to make sure that the will of the people understand exactly what's going on. And you can believe that or not, I've got none of the guts, brother, I'm honest with you.
What politician do you vote for? When he gets in office, you know what you've really got. What you've got is what you present yourself to think, right?
And I'm, I'm not saying you do career, but like, you can ask anybody.
Can I say something, please? Can I help you? So I'm Don, I have the tax assessor's office. I, I didn't catch your name, can you tell me again?
Have some devil.
Okay. Handsome devil. I want to offer you to come to my office, and I will pull up your accounts for the last five years. I'll show you what your value changed because I promise you, I raised your value. I promise you. I will show you the mill rate rollback, and I will show you what would have happened if the mill rate had not rolled back. I'll give you those numbers. Because when you said, well, ago, did you raise values and then lower the mill rate? I have never one time in my entire profession had any of the Fannin County commissioners or the school board members come to me and say, we need money, go up. We need relief, it's tax, or it's election season, go down. I did not work like that. But what I do have to do is stay as close to market value as I can. So, when I went up, every one of these guys had two options, three really. They could have took that tax increase and had to advertise it as a tax increase on their face in the paper. Or they could have rolled it back a little bit and took a little tax increase and advertised it as a tax increase. Or they could have rolled all the way back to that set magic number that's called a non-tax increase and it's a equalized mill rate rollback. Okay? They don't have a choice in this. When I start throwing these numbers out there at them, and they knew for 2024, they were fixing to be faced with some serious decisions because of the values that took place in that year. So, it's not really fair to judge or to think that you're being unfairly treated when they did exactly what they should have done.
Well, that's true. Except I'm, I'm getting up in age, and I'm in the home exemption category.
Yes. But I, I want to go over, number one, make sure you're getting every exemption that a handsome devil deserves. And and I want to make sure you understand the, the translucency of our office because I don't work like that. And, um, you know, I want to help you understand. I can't convert you and I'm not ready to convert anybody. Uh, but I did want you to understand that part of, it don't really work like that. Um, and I want to say one more thing. I'm not saying anything else, no matter what y'all say. I want to know of a show of hands in here, including elected officials. Jesus is watching you. Who knew when they were voting that they were gonna be turned around and given the opportunity to have to vote on a sales tax increase, potential mill rate increases, hold an election, and all of this? Who knew by that question that that, that when you voted yes or you voted no, you knew that?
Nobody.
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 I'll put my hand up on that. Yeah, I'll put my hand up.
Well, you were the one.
Because I think you're doing unfair, unfair question to, like, to get the, the vote that you want, just like some people are saying that the written vote, when we voted on that was. But I think you're doing the same thing, so.
Well, the reason I ask that
Yeah, I'll say, yeah, I did it.
Good, you knew more than anybody.
You're telling the truth.
Um, the, the thing, the reason I ask that is, is I knew, I knew when we opened early voting and people educated, educated taxpayers were stopping in the office saying, what does this mean? Is it yes, 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 no? Or is it no, 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 yes? What in the world does this mean? And I'll be honest with you. At that point of the game, I had had no education from the state. I had not had any clarification. I had been studying, trying to figure out what this meant. And I couldn't properly answer that.
Well, Don, is it not true there's not even a program for this yet?
No, they're working on it extensively, but it's not done.
So, we're going to pass by majority, though?
The vote?
Yeah, we're going to pass by majority.
Yeah, well, what
Depending on the pick of the county voters. Oh, by majority.
But, but
The state did give us an opportunity.
Yes.
They told us to opt in or opt out. In their wisdom, well,
Because they knew.
What you want to call it because they knew.
I like that better, whatever you want to call it.
And see, that's, that's another thing you could ask people is when I voted, I was not aware that the county could opt out.
Yes. Well, a lot of things have evolved. A lot of things have evolved, and they're still evolving.
And we need to be able to debate this thing.
That's right.
So, they're all of us, right?
All right, let me ask just a couple of questions.
You can debate twenty, thirty.
Let me ask a couple of questions, if you don't mind, because some things have come up, and I appreciate that. The, the, the floss, which I, I, I've got had it with East Floss, and Splosts, and Losts. And I'm not, I'm not, I didn't, I'm not negative tonight, okay? I'm just saying, every time I turn around, they have something with the Lost. And at the end of it, it's called Tax. That's all I'm saying. That's all I'm saying. I'm not here debating that. But let me ask you something, if I'm right or wrong. Now, when you get an East Floss, okay? Now, stay with me on this. When you get an East Floss, and that revenue comes in from the East Floss from the one penny, right? That increases revenue to the school board. That does not decrease revenue. But if it, no, 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 if it passes, let's, let's assume it passed.
That's a big assumption.
Let me, yeah, but let me go back to that.
You said, you said you wouldn't, you wouldn't vote for another tax.
I didn't say that. No, I never said that. I don't believe in taxes, period, if you want to go there. Now, you go good above, let me
That's how many people are there.
Yeah, you know, I know. All right, let me stay focused. If you vote in an East Floss, right? It's, it's increased revenue to the Board of Education. It's not decreased revenue, correct? So, when you pass your millage rate, that's property tax. That's the money you bring in through the property tax. Your East Floss increases your revenue, correct? Okay. If you have a Splosts, your Splosts increases your revenue, correct? Right? But the Floss, the Floss doesn't increase your revenue. When? Doesn't increase your revenue. Your East Floss increases your revenue. Your Splosts increases your revenue. If the county would have voted in a Floss, if you would go this option and you vote that in, and I'm not here advocating and debating the merits, all right? So, this is not, I'm just wanting you to know. But when you talk about being confused about it, and don't take it wrong, it's not being disrespectful. Well, what the Floss would do if you voted in, if you vote the Floss in, then that one cent, if it brought in two million dollars, it would decrease the property tax revenue, correct?
It's my home.
Right?
Back or spotting the match.
Exactly.
We're following the mask.
So, see, the Floss, the reason, the reason, in my opinion, this is where my opinion, the reason nobody is, is pounding the door for a Floss is that doesn't increase revenue in any of the municipalities or the counties.
No, I don't think that's
All right. Now, wait a minute, that's my opinion, I said. I started out, my opinion.
I'll start out.
Yeah, I started out. I just said, it's my opinion. Yeah, that's clear, all right? But that's my opinion, one. So, when you, when you start talking about, you gotta go back to, you gotta go back to, and I, I respect the young man that changes mind, and I respect the young man that says, uh, we have a system that appears to be working. But you can't change the fact. Now, with, with this right here, it does not alter, and I want to be clear on that, it does not alter their ability to raise taxes. If you keep this in place, it doesn't mean they can't raise taxes. They, there, there can't be a fear of, well, we only got twenty million dollars, and we only got eighteen million dollars, and we only got ten million dollars. You can raise taxes tomorrow. This will not change that. It doesn't change that one bit. So, if they feel, and, and I really don't want misunderstood, I'm not saying these gentlemen are going to raise taxes. You always have to come and look at these seats as empty belonging to you because they may not be there one day. I mean, I, I go all the way back to, you know, uh, I ain't going to tell you how far we're back. But none of these three guys was here the first time I came over here. I think Dr. Ballarat was here the first time I came to this building, or this building when it was built, all right? Dr. Ballarat, first time, okay? Bill Simons, list goes on. So, you've got, you've got to sit here, and you've got to look at these chairs and think of all the people in the past and all the people in the future. They can alter in what they can do when you say no. So, I'm not telling, I'm not telling you to push back against it. I'm just saying, you got ninety-seven hundred people that said yes. You can debate. I mean, you want me to believe eighty-one million people didn't know what they was doing when they voted for Joe Biden?
Yeah.
I might have went the wrong direction on that. Right?
Sorry.
No, I, I, I actually, unlike him, I knew what I was doing. But you see what I'm saying? So, you can't, you can't go away thinking, well, if, if you don't put this in place and, and you guys opt out, they can raise the mill. Now, they don't want to because here's what they don't want to do. They don't want to go, the, the next time we go out there and call themselves, uh, Republicans and call themselves conservatives and raise the mill rate up three mills. But that's actually what they would have to do. If this goes in place, they'd have to change the mill rate to meet the budget that they want in place. So, it can get very confusing, but there is a cautionary side of the future.
Is that not a good point, right there, what you just made?
Highlight that if I'm at a good point.
Okay. You just said that we'd have to raise taxes.
Right?
This did not mean
No. I didn't say you have to, you can.
They know that we'd have to. Would we not? I mean, cut the budget.
Huh?
Cut the budget.
Whoa, 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 now we're going down the road. Going down a different road, going down a different road. What, what, uh, what, uh, at the current time, at the current time, tax assessment, which begin, I want to reiterate, and, and
Mr. Black, can I call with a three-minute limit?
Yes.
No, no, you, you can call with a three-minute limit? All right, opposite end. Okay. But the, the tax assessment right now, through your millage rate, you have, you, you set what you're bringing in revenue. If this goes in place, obviously, the assessment, there'd be some changes there on what you would be able to put in place. You'd have to raise the mill, is what I'm saying. You understand? So, but you get what I'm saying?
Yeah.
You cut me off. Doc Whaley called the whistle.
I think I have a question that Oh, plug around. Um, you used, Dawn mentioned that she had the option of the existing system versus the, the FB five, five year, five eighty-one, whichever was beneficial of choosing that. So, what is the disadvantage of just leaving it the way it is? That's my first question. Because if she still has the choice of choosing which is the most beneficial. Okay? My second question is, is it, is it the old syst- if, if we accept HB five eighty-one, they say like the word, if we don't, then you vote for a Floss? You have to do a Floss? And what if that Floss fails?
That's the worst.
Okay, so that, I, I'm saying, if, if you leave five eighty-one like it is, does that give her the option of choosing which is more beneficial? I think that's where the confusion is coming.
I'm, it's Denise Smith. I just, it, it, they're questions that, that I don't think really everybody understands.
So, to answer that, the state says that the taxpayer automatically gets the one that's most beneficial to the taxpayer. So, starting out, it's always going to be our local one for anybody that's been locked in over a year. But then after that, it really can change, and you don't really know what their standard is going to be and how much that five eighty-one bill is going to change because it's already changing right now. So, the system, when it's written properly, will run numbers and will say, hey, this group of folk are going to stay under your local exemption. And this group right here are not. Hey, I've got my phone number for you. No, 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 come back. Here you go, sir.
I know, I'm still here.
Hey, hey. basically, when they, if they opt in to this or we stay in, there'll be a portion of taxpayers that are taxed one way with a cap, and there'll be a portion that are taxed without a cap. And all your numbers, I'll keep up with all of those with this system. And at the end of the year, before we start sending out assessment notices, top things, it'll start kind of saying, okay, who's going to go with this group of exemption? Who's going to go with this group? And each year, it's going to change because as values increase or values decrease or as things are removed, as people buy in the city or get, um, annexed out, be annexed out, annexed in, there's a whole bunch of things that are going to change all those numbers. And that's why, right now, I cannot, no one in the state of Georgia can go into our system, and especially the ones with local exemptions, and say, this is going to cost the county ten million dollars. Or it's going to cost the school five million dollars. And as long as I've been here, they can tell you, And as long as I've been here, they can tell you, I've never not given them the numbers that they've asked for, but we can't produce them, because there's too many things up in the air, and the knowledge of things that are still changing. So, if they vote this in, and I may be speaking wrong when I say this, Jamie, correct me if I'm wrong, but Jamie wants to know, he wants to do the will of the taxpayers. And if the will of the taxpayers is the fact that he knows they knew what they were voting for, and they are all gonna promise to come out and vote in that extra sales tax that seals the deal, and he's not gonna be hung with an exemption that he can't make up the deficit without being every one of them being the bad person in the bunch, when they never asked for this to begin with, none of us did. And then House Bill five-eight-one has not been heard of in two years, and nobody really cares, and I will be so glad when I never hear that again. But all of a sudden, Jamie is raising the mill rate two points. Robert and Ashley are raising the mill rate three points. The cities are raising the mill rate two points. Well, if you're a city homeowner that lives in Morganton, they raise, and school raise, and county raises, you, we've got problems. We really have taxpayers that cannot pay that tax bill. And when I run the numbers, when Jamie started saying, I might be giving out too many much information, lose lips. When Jamie started saying, I'm concerned that if we ask them for another tax, another sales tax on top of what we're already getting, and then what if they say, hey, we're not voting in that, that wasn't what I agreed to. I asked for an exemption, and I'm being punished. And I'm being asked for now another tax. Well, we got a floss, and a lost, and a splosh, and, yeah, all this stuff. And what happens when the taxpayers get tired of this, and they're going to? And so, right back, three years to, to each other, we're gonna say, okay, six years on the splosh. Let's vote that in again. Then we're gonna say, hey, I know you didn't know this was coming, but now we need to renew on the five-year floss. Well, if everybody in Fannin County says, I'm tired of getting lost, they're gonna stop voting for it, because the splosh only had seven percent voters in twenty-twenty-three.
Then my question is, why would you take that risk? Why would you?
That's why he's afraid to do this. That's why we're here.
That's why we're here, is to make sure that everybody understands the pros and cons of doing it.
And trust me, it, it's hard.
To me, it isn't worth the risk, but I, I, I don't know, you know.
And, and we respect the, the will of the people, but the thing about it is, is that they didn't really, I didn't even understand it, didn't, all this here is like a nightmare.
It's a complex bill.
I mean, because why would you wanna change something that works? That's good for the people? And then they're asking us to do this, and like she said, I hate taxes too, but that splosh, it does so much, and thank God for it, and thank God for the people that come out and support it, because we couldn't do what we do for the people without it. And, because we'd have to raise taxes. And I ain't about raising taxes. I hate them. But you gotta have, we got a, a school system, one of the best in the state. These cities, they've got so much, they've gotta provide for. And, and there's a cost in government. And, and it's getting, I'm hoping it pans out a little bit, but I do take the, the, the voters, what they did, they voted it in, and I respect that. That's the hardest thing for me to have to do, is think about going against that. But I've gotta do what I feel's right for my people and my county, and these cities. Because we have that responsibility, and if, if it takes, hey, if it takes losing, this, that's it, I mean. But I'm gonna do what I think's right in my heart.
The system getting the big floss or splosh?
No.
And, and, and that, that's another thing right there. Sonia's right here. Let me tell you some, let me tell you some. You know, we get out here, and, and they can tell you, Lynn can tell you too. They always have to vote for splosh, something that's very important to this county and these cities. Do you realize with what, how many would you say, there's thirty, twenty-seven thousand or thirty thousand registered voters? And fifteen hundred comes out and supports it? Oh my Lord, man, that's, that's cutting the cheese thin right there now. I mean, you, I mean, people, it's just, there's so much here, and there's another thing. They wouldn't have gave you an option-out clause if they did not know this thing wouldn't write. Now, I'm telling you, I've been in law a long time, and I studied it too, and I, I seen a lot of laws come through, and it's like, oh, there's a word always in there, they give you an option to opt out. If it was so great, then why are you giving us an option to get out of this? And, and we had both elected officials standing right here, did not know what, and thank God for the people, like Aldo Lee, from the commissioners we used to have, that Brian had mentioned. They built this problem. We're just fortunate to add to it. They, they laid the foundation for this. And what we're doing right now is that, why would you take what you've got that's working great, giving our people what they need, to, uh, I don't know what's gonna happen next year? Why would you do that? I mean, it's a lot to think about, but why would you go against the will of the people? And then, that's just something that we have to study and pray about. It is tough. It's a tough situation.
What's gonna happen at the end of here? Are you gonna be asking for a county-wide vote? Or are you guys gonna be making the decision, or what happens after these three hearings?
Prayer.
We're doing that anyway, but I'm just saying.
I'm gonna have to cut another yard.
I think for me, we're trying to get another clause on, hey, is this, is this truly?
So you're trying to get a, a feel from the hearings and then the decision will be made?
If we were gonna opt out, we had to have three meetings regardless.
Right.
Okay? I wanted to have these, like I said earlier, this was just for me, I can't speak for anybody else in here. I wanted to have these to find out if this is truly, and, and I understand what the vote said. I understand that, and I respect that, I swear to it. But I didn't know a hundred percent. I, I'm chairman of the command of, of this county, and I, I'm ashamed to say it. But I didn't know what it all meant. When I asked, I didn't get good answers. I didn't get hardly any answers. When ACCG, I, yes, how do we go with this?
They didn't even know.
You know? And, and that's, that's my riff that I'm talking to, and you know, for me, it was, it's just hard. I'm, I mean, this is, uh, that's why I make the big bucks, I guess, you know, is, but, but the thing about it is, is just, it's an old county. One way or another, it's gonna affect this old county. And, and this is, for me, I mean, we got a lot of decisions, don't get me wrong, but this is the first one that truly, ten years down the road, could be the determinant factor of, of, of good or not good. You know? And, and like we said, you know, my, my concern is, and, and just like Mr. Richards said, I'll say it like this, you know, we're tired of all the O S Ts, splosh, floss, lost, T splosh, all that stuff. We're tired of it. I understand it. Well, what if we do get tired of the splosh and lost? You know? And, and yeah, everybody wants to do budget cuts, well, guess what? That means
Services are cut.
These, these endless services we're trying to put on to, to better citizens. We, we cut them out. Our, our law enforcement, we, we would have to cut, shoot off with it. We get somebody here makes thirty thousand, I don't care, you know what I'm saying? But my point is, there's a lot of unknowns at this time, and, and just like you said, if, there's a lot, that's the biggest two-letter word in the dictionary in my mind, if. Yeah. If everything goes smooth, shoot you out. Let's run with it.
Jamie, is there anything in the, uh, that HB five-eight-one that puts a limit on, uh, the county or school board or cities over their control over the millage rate? I mean, should they say that you can only raise it to this, or you can only cut it back? So you still?
There's a statewide capital.
There's a statewide capital.
A statewide capital.
A point about, we're way lower than that.
Right, but that's, that's in effect right now.
So, I mean, do you, do you think it will be a problem? Let's just say, like, you know, you're putting your budget together for twenty-twenty-six or whatever, in June of this year. And you see that, for whatever reason, things are gonna be way more, you know, you've got some projects for, or whatever. Are you concerned that you won't be able to raise the millage rate to a rate where you can collect that revenue? Is that, is that, I mean, see, I don't know, so I don't do it, but is that a concern?
For, for me, we, we, we put the projects out that we can pull. I try not to live for the main.
But I, but I mean, can you, do you feel like you'll still be able to collect the revenue that the county needs by tinkering with the millage rate? You know, going up?
We can just leave it down the
We would have to, we, we would have to go up on a lot of, like, permits.
We, we'd have to look at something. I, I, I mean, honestly, it, we just have to see. You're right. Honestly, we don't have numbers to run to even, um, to do that. Like she said, there, there's no, this is a, this is truly a, a different time in life for all of us to move forward. And I don't have that answer. I'm sorry. As long as you've been leading in the mic.
The only thing I can say, and this would really be helpful, and I know it's impossible for you to do this. I'm Sonia Smith, by the way. I serve on the Board of Elections. And it'd be nice if you could come once in a while and sit and see the people that come into early vote, three weeks of early voting, okay? This particular election, first of all, this seventy-eight-page bill, by the way. Seventy-eight page, I, has anybody here read it? Has anybody, oh, have you read it? Well, you ought to be up here. Well, when you read it, did you understand it?
There's too much, it's too complicated.
Absolutely. One always questions why it takes seventy-eight pages to say a certain thing. The number of people that came in to vote early, personally, that I knew, and some that, like, um, Mr. Donald seemed to ask, ask, he didn't know. Wanted to know, what is this? What are we voting on? There was nothing that I noticed, any lengthy editorials in the paper preparing us for this thing that appeared on the ballot. Well, we all knew that Mr. Trump was running, and the other lady was running, the, the lady was running, because we had nothing but advertisement about it. We knew everything good about him and bad about him. We knew nothing about this bill. The average guy, the average worker, got off work, came in and voted, looked, you know what I think he looked at? He saw that it was gonna raise an exemption for seventy-five-hundred to, what was it, twenty thousand? Oh, that sounds like a good thing. I'll vote yes. How did I vote? I didn't vote at all, because I didn't have a clue what I was voting on. Not a clue. And I couldn't tell any of the voters that asked me, what does it say? Couldn't tell you. Now, if I have a toothache, we usually go to the dentist, right? So what I did after the election, I went to see Ms. Dawn. And I asked her, what does this thing mean? And she gave me a very good explanation, not that it answered all of my questions. It didn't. I don't think it could possibly answer anybody's questions. All I say to you is, that Ms. Dawn, and these people up ahead for you, that you've elected to run the county, of taxpayers here, most of them are born and raised here, and they mean the best for the county. So I'm gonna rely on them for their, for their advice. And I'm gonna advise, I'm gonna rely on Dawn, because she's also a taxpayer here, lives here all of her life, or many years. And I'm gonna rely on what they believe is gonna do. I thank God that we have these hearings that we can opt out. All that glitters is not gold, okay? As you've heard that before. And I'm just saying to you, we've done very well as a county in taxes for years, as long as I can remember, and I've been here since nineteen-seventy-six. We have almost the lowest millage rate in the whole state. Why would we opt in for this? That's what I say to you. I'm not telling you how to do it, but I'm just saying, think about this. Why would we fix what doesn't need fixing? That's all I gotta say.
Well, I've been here since nineteen-seventy-four. So I'm, uh, I've been here a while. But I'm, uh, I would like Ms. Dawn to tell me the metric that they're gonna use to establish that percentage. CPI, you throw that out there? Do you know what they're gonna use?
They don't know.
That's what I'm saying. I'm just a common sense guy. But why would I vote for something that ain't even, ain't even written down yet? I don't even, I don't even know the percentage of what they're gonna put in there, and what value it's gonna bring. My grandpa said, don't grab a pig and a poke, and that's what that is. And we are, we are good stewards of that, of that Fannin County money that, to our school system. We, these guys, y'all voted on it, but you don't get to collect it. Did you know? The school board gets to set the millage, collect the millage, spend the millage. And I think we're doing a darn good job of the monies that's been brought into Fannin County. If you can't tell, I'm a little bit passionate about that, but I can't vote for something, and I voted no, and I saw, in August, I was at a GSBA conference, and I was a delegate there, and they brought this bill up, and I thought, that's crazy. I'm looking at it, but you know what? People saw a cap. And immediately, they voted yes for the cap. The same people that, in the school board, that voted for that, I just saw the numbers, and more than half are opting out. They didn't opt out in August, but they opted out now. I saw the list going down, where they, they've already said. My superintendent had one, and I, and I apologize, I didn't plan on speaking either, and I don't have any numbers up here, but when you look at twenty-two thousand voters in the state, in the county, and only nine thousand voted for it, that tells me that's less than half. Because I'm, I'm under obligation, not to just, for the voter, but for every citizen of the county I'm supposed to represent. And that's what I got to say.
Anyway. I'm just thinking as a citizen as well, and I wasn't around when the last, um, get in or get out thing was voted on, but from my understanding, it was social security. And, um, I don't know how well that's doing us now. We got in for it for life, or got out for life. We voted in, and I can say it's not working out too well. I'll never see any of that, but I'm paying the, I'm paying the bill on it. And I'm not saying that against any of the folks that collected here, because I've got family that, you know, that depends on that. But what I'm saying is, is if you get in for something for life, social security was a great thing when they voted it in, because that guaranteed somebody to have something when they got older. But look what they've done. They got your in for life, and they twisted it around however they wanted to use it. And that's my concern on this, is if you opt in to something, you're throwing everybody in this county into it. And what are they gonna do with it down the road? They opt out something, they just twist it any way. And that concerns me as a citizen, you know? And, uh, it puts us in a different position than they've already said, is that we've already got a good exemption in this county. I'm trying to take care of the people in this county. And I, as a citizen, appreciate that. Nobody dislikes taxes more than I do. And, uh, you know, I voted yes for it, because I was like, heck, yeah, I, I don't like paying taxes. And I voted for it, you know what I'm saying? But, um, I'm thankful now that they give us an option to sit down and discuss this and opt out if we want to. And I'm just saying, I need to think real hard about whether we bind ourselves to something for life before we figure out all the details on it. So, as a citizen, I'm appreciative of this meeting, and I hope we, uh, all think it's real well, because once you're in, you're in. It's gonna limit you.
It'll limit your control, too.
And that's what I was gonna say, when you do that, you're giving up local control, giving it to the state. To the state. So I like keeping local control here in this county.
Me too.
Just I'm hearing, they're saying if you opt in, it's for life, but if you opt out, it's also for life. So it's not a, either one is for life, so that's not the issue.
But you got local versus state, whether you want, do you want to run it?
If it really got answered, is if you're opting out, and down the road, your SPLT gets, gets refused by the voters, what happens?
Have to raise the tax.
Have to raise the tax.
Cut the budget. You can always cut the budget, people.
And what if the splosh fails, fails that floss?
Yes.
Fails even the first time?
Jamie and I did the numbers on that. I didn't realize that was what you were asking, I'm sorry. So if we lose splosh and lost, and we don't get splosh, then we will be, to make ends meet, with twenty-four values and twenty-four budgets, the county mill rate would be twenty-two percent. Without the school. Without the school.
You can't cut budgets. You can cut budgets.
A little.
You can do a way, yeah, you're right.
A little.
You're right. But you can get, you can do away with the services that are provided.
Yeah, but, I mean,
And you don't wanna do that.
But think about it this way, people.
We don't want to do that.
I mean, I'm not trying to be argumentative, but I'm just looking at it on the flip side. If you got, uh, elderly person on fixed income, and their electric bill goes up, their taxes go up, their insurance goes up, they can't call and say, uh, hey, uh, Donald Trump, or Joe Biden, or whatever, I'm gonna be a little bit short this year. I need an extra four hundred dollars on my social security check. So what I'm saying is, I don't think that you guys are gonna go hog wild with the millage rate, you know, and, and bring it up thirty or forty percent. That's not what I'm worried about. I'm just saying that a little bit of control for the most vulnerable people in our county would be a sigh of relief for them. Because they don't have a way to raise their income anymore based on the whim of whatever the real estate market's doing, and their taxes. So, it, I know it would be transferring more of the burden to the people that don't have a homestead exemption. You know, they would be paying a bigger share of what we need. But I'm okay with that. I mean, I think most people would be okay with that. So, I, you know, I, I'm glad we're having these meetings. I know everybody's got different, uh, ideas. There's no point in any of us getting mad at each other. It's just, you're looking, you're coming at it with a different mindset, right? You guys are in charge, you're setting the millage rate, you're, you know, you're, you're having to do the hard work. And we're just out here as consumers and taxpayers, but we see things too. We run into people that, I mean, it makes an impression on you. I don't know how many times I've been at the grocery store in the past two years where I've had to see people put their groceries back. And you, and, and, and we, and it makes us hurt, you know?
We all go through this together.
So those caps, if those caps are in place, like I said, I don't care if the people are seventy or seventeen, but if they're homesteaded, I would love to see those restrictions in place where their taxes didn't have to go any time.
But if your, our tax, our exemptions are capped, by what we have, for all the people that are currently homesteaded in Fannin County, I own my homes since two thousand. My home is, and I have homestead on it, and it is capped at what my value was in two thousand. Now, if I go and sell that house, the next person is not locked in. Now, Dawn, am I not saying that right?
Yes.
See, that's, that's what, I don't think people are understanding.
So here's the thing, though, Lynn, if we're already doing that, or going above and beyond that, why are we worried that they're putting it on paper and saying we're gonna cap it at this? If we're already doing it, it's gonna be, continue on like we're doing, right?
But our exemptions are better than the state.
But the bill, if I'm not mistaken, now somebody correct me if I'm wrong, the bill says if your current exemptions with your county are better, you get to keep them.
Right. That is correct. Well, the problem is that to make it up, Well, the problem is that to make it up, you're relying on a floss, which may or may not pass. And as Brian so eloquently put it, most of us are tired of additional taxes. So at some point in time, you run the risk of losing one of the three that we have, and that would, or all three, and that would be detrimental, just as the folks that are guilty are, are you. But the other thing is, if here, under the system we have now, I don't get to vote up here with these votes, with either one of the two groups I work with, I don't get to vote. So if they screw it up, and our taxes suddenly go way up, you get, we all get to vote. I vote. We get to go vote them out. But what? And I voted no. And I will tell you, I voted no on every one of them, because since I took political science in college, it became abundantly clear, those measures are always written in a means that entices you to vote yes. I don't care whichever one it is, they're enticing me to vote yes. Some of them might be great, but that's just Lynn as an individual. But the, I think we all need to consider, and I think that's why we're having these, is whether or not it, if you don't like the outcome, you get to control it by the people that you vote for every two or four years, depending on the season, or whether or not it's controlled by somebody. It puts something out with very little public impact, I think, in effect.
What, what did our dis, how did our district people vote? Johnny and...
When, when we had a meeting that has the quorum of all these organizations early on, uh, right after the first year, right at the end of last year, uh, and both Gooch and Mr. Chastain were here, they were very open to questions, and there were a lot of questions that neither one of them could ask.
But did they vote for it? I mean, were, were they in support of it?
Yes.
They voted for it down as gold up, but then they, that was in March and April, or in the, in the March, when we were here, end of December, they said, there's still things that have to be fixed, and there's still things that we don't have the answer to.
And they don't understand.
And they didn't know the, they didn't know the exemptions that was already in place.
And they couldn't explain it to us.
Right. So is there anybody else?
Can I ask Dawn a question? As a home, as a taxpayer with a homestead exemption, if for some reason your software decides that I'm better off on the HB 581 side for this year, and then next year, things go crazy over here, can I go back?
It will automatically flip you. You'll have no control. If there is an exemption in your name with an application in my office, it will automatically run the numbers, and it will flip you to one side or the other.
So when it goes to the HB 581 side and says, that's better for me that year, do I have the option of going back?
It will do it every year. I'll run it every year, and it'll do it for you.
Well, that's what it says next. Well, that's what we understand as it is next.
Yes, that is today's option.
It'll give, it'll do it for you, and it will settle on what it chooses is gonna be the one that's the highest benefit.
Whenever the estimate tax comes out, it'll automatically say, okay, this exemption is greater, so you're on this classification. And next year, it may be something different. Let's say that you were just on the outside of Blue Ridge city limits, and you got annexed in, well, all of a sudden, you're gonna be better off in Blue Ridge, because now you've got a local in there that mine doesn't give you on the outside.
But either way, it's gonna be the highest exemption for the taxpayers.
It'll be whatever's in the taxpayers' benefit.
My cap with my homestead exemption is what I lose forever, right? So if I go to, if I'm switched to the HB 581, whatever the inflation or however they're doing, whatever their number is, that year, if that's what your computer says that I'm, you know, better off, so do I lose this homestead exemption? That, that count forever?
So you just asked a question that I have not thought of, because if you started out in 1999, and you've had an exemption locked in since then, and then all of a sudden, somehow or another, it looked like the Hayden Houseville 581's gonna benefit you for next year, they go up 2%, or that's their first though-out number, well, we don't know a number yet, from 2024 value. Well, if I have you locked in from 89 or wherever, 99, which was when it started, our values back then is never gonna be as good as 2024's values. But if for some reason your circumstances changed, and it, and you did benefit for Houseville 581, the way it's wrote is it says you'll go up 2% this year, and maybe next year is 3%? But if you jump back and you fall under our local, where is it gonna start from on the third year?
Probably up there where the values are.
And that's something, that's something that they've really not accounted for, because unfortunately, a lot of the counties don't fall into place as how Fannin County does. Can I ask you a question? No. Uh, Mr. Pritchett, you're looking over your shoulder like I'm not talking to you.
No, I didn't know.
It is you. So I watched your interview with Mr. Gooch. And he did a wonderful interview with you, and as he went through and he was explaining all this stuff, and he was covered in very transparent and very thorough, like that's the best I've heard them answer stuff. And you asked just the right questions for that. But in the midst of that, he did take a second, and he said, we understand this isn't a one-size-fits-all now. And he said, we are having to work for the state of Georgia. And he said, there are counties, and he brought up Fannin County, and I'm kind of paraphrasing this, so you can straighten me out if it's not right. And he said, I wanna give kudos to Fannin County. And he said, out of the seven districts, or the seven counties in my district that I represent, they've got the lowest millage rate. He said, they're, they're maintaining and watching their budgets, and they're making it work up there. And he turned right around, and he said, so when I say this, I'm addressing, because Mr. Pritchett asked, why did this happen? What brought this on? And he said, counties that were not rolling back millage, and they were taking advantage of what he called a backdoor tax. And he said, they are taxing, tax gouging, however you wanna say it, he called it a backdoor tax. And he said, they're just taking the new money, and they're rolling it into administrations, and they're not using it like we intended it. This is going on in the schools, and it's going on in the cities, it's going on in the counties.
You took notes. You didn't just watch that, you took notes.
Go show your Fannin County's good kids.
And in my opinion, and I'm not putting words into Mr. Gooch as much, but I've talked to him, and I've dealt with him after he came to this meeting, and honestly believe that not only his, but Johnny's eyes were open, that we are a little different than Gilmer and than Union, and these counties where they're gonna be more commercial and not residential, they're gonna have a sales tax advantage. Nobody comes to Fannin County to buy their school clothes for their kids. They don't drive to Fannin County to eat. They don't drive to Fannin County to have their drink.
No, they're driving here to buy up all the property.
And they are making my life hard, that is what they're doing.
You're, you're very accurate. Your state, your state senator was very, Steve Newt, your state senator, was very complimentary of good stewardship in this county. Now, he was, he was.
And I believe...
And, and, and that is, that is not something that I know myself personally, no one has challenged tonight. I, I haven't heard anybody challenge the good stewardship of the county.
Well, the way I took that was more like... The way I took that was more like, there is an opt-out, and there's counties that may or may not benefit from this, and there's counties that are gonna excel. Because if we were sitting here tonight, and we didn't have a local exemption that had been in place, and we had 22% millage rate, I'd be screaming for this, because it would be exactly the only salvation for the county. And there's counties out there that Mr. Gooch and all of them are trying to rein in and get a little control. He said that. He said the word control. But I don't think it's every county that they're really talking about. And they, they're not trying to micromanage. They're saying, we know, we have, he said, we have the evidence that they're taking 50% increases in these schools. And if that's going on, yeah, he needs to do something. This is the best thing they come up with, and it's fine, it works for some. It doesn't for others. But I, I just feel like even at his level of what he said with you, because this was their best attempt at fixing this, and trying to put a cap on these values and make these people rein in this behind-the-backdoor tax pricing, and taking this money when we've not been doing that.
And Dawn, we're not the only counties looking opt-out, are we?
Oh, no, no.
There's several counties.
I think the last I heard, and I don't know where it's ever came from, but 80% of the school boards in the state of Georgia are opting out. Because the school board have to lose lose. You guys cannot get the income from our floss
Right.
to make up the deficit. You're gonna be absorbing every bit of that out of your checkbook.
Hey, Ms. Dawn, when we, yes, we can cut budgets, but when a school system cuts budget, we're taking stuff away from kids and also employees in Fannin County. We employ 461 people in this county. So we either have to take stuff from children, and usually take stuff by, away from children by removing programs, which means that we have to root now people. So it's a spiraling lose loop. And we are blessed in this county. This county is out of its way, and that is not loss on us. But this, and to mention that, yes, we can raise millage, but the frustrating part to me is that the state with this has tied local governments' hands, and they're, in order to still serve their citizens at the level, not even adding anything, at the level that we serve them right now, then our local people that care about y'all, that look in your face every day, are forced to make a decision to either not raise your taxes and not provide for you all what is needed, or to raise taxes and let you down by saying, I need more from you. And that's what frustrates me, because it's hidden by letting state government look off the hero and penalizing our local people.
And you're right, and they're already, their first agenda when they went back into session, I was told, was 581 revision. And they're already working on all that. But we got a hard deadline of March 1st. So no matter what they do, unless they change that, no matter what they do at this point, we're captive to that date.
Well, you know, I, I think as, as property owner in the county, we're all property owners, I guess, is I think the challenge is, is we don't wanna see revenue increase in the county based on, based on assessment increase. And it, it's, it's a vicious cycle, okay? And this is not just Fannin County, okay, or, or Fannin County, so let's not get all personal. But you go down to you, you sit down, and you say, well, my taxes went up, and you say to me, I didn't raise your taxes, I don't raise taxes, I have to reassess every parcel, you have to reassess the entire county every three years, right? Within three years, you have, so what you say to me is, I just have to reassess, I don't do that. I send the tax digest now. So if we come down, citizens, to you, you know, it's not your fault, our assessments are here, and our taxes went up, so you, you don't have a, you know, anything? We come up to these guys here, and they say, they say, well, we didn't raise you, you know, we didn't raise your taxes, your milit rate's the same. I didn't make your assessment go, I got nothing to do with that. And it's like a vicious cycle, and that's not personal to this one or you. And I think that's what the state was trying to address with so many counties in the state, maybe not directly this county.
Yes.
So if, if something happened, assessments continue to go through the roof, I'm not looking at you and saying you're doing that. But if they do by no, no fault of your own, and they choose one year, hey, I'm not rolling back. Because the one thing with this, and I'm not advocating to say, let's say with 581, but the one thing with this is we can't gloss over, if the school board wants more revenue, and this goes in place, they can raise the milit rate. And that will take away from the assessment being what drives the increase in the revenue. That's all I'm saying.
I have, and we need to bring this to an end.
Yeah, I agree.
But my question really, in my first year here, state come in and said, you're using the new assessments. If you don't do them, we're gonna find you, you'll do them ourselves.
Right.
So there again, we have to do this every three years, as you know, based on what the state tells us to do. So if it was up to me, hey, we live all the way, thanks for all, you know? But I just wanted to make that clear, that some people may think, well, the county board commissioners say you have to reassess every three years. That's not how that works, but please understand that.
And I, I own the fact that when I raise values, I know what happened when I pushed that button. I know what the impact is gonna be. And whenever I do that, and I, I do the numbers game, like you said earlier, and I stay within the ratio study, you know, we can be a 36 to a 44, and I've been the kind of gal that tried to hang out at 36, a 34, 36, you know, 36, 38, I'm sorry. And I fell out, out of line so fast, and I know Ginger was kind of talking in the paper when we dropped that ratio study, and everybody was...
I wasn't talking in the paper, the paper put me talking.
I just remember it came out, people understood. I mean, they knew that I dropped overnight from a 38 to barely a 36, maybe even dropped below, I can't remember. And that was all these sales that took place. And so when you don't leave wiggle room and, and go up as high as values really are, and try to stay below, you know, some counties, they'll run from a 40 to a 44. That means the increase in value. That doesn't necessarily mean the increase in mill rate, because they can do whatever they want. My numbers are completely separate, mine rely on sales and market. And that's what I play is that game of high or low, either way, it's where it's gotta go to stay in line.
So ladies and gentlemen, with that, and I think with that, I'll ask school board, if you guys have anything to say, if you think what we, of the individual, City Moog, City Morgana, City McKay, anybody. Great meeting tonight, thank you so much. I think I learned a lot, both sides, I hope everybody else has. Please be safe going home, we have another 10 o'clock, 10 a.m. here. If you can make it, you find something, you bring it to us, and then we'll go from there. For the board commissioners, I'll make a motion with your jury. I'm glad.